Good. I call this special board meeting of the Newbury County Board of Trustees to order. We have a forum present this morning. Ms. Shannon is joining us by phone. She had a last minute change of her plans for the day. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, we have one amendment for executive session. We want to add a B contractual matters for S C E C G. This is not an action item. This is information only.
All right, so it was contractual matters and what was the rest? S?
S C E C G.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please join me for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful spring morning, Lord, and we just thank you once again for the opportunity and the freedom to come together. And we just ask for your wisdom this morning as we -- information is shared with us and as we make decisions. And we just again ask your blessings today on all of our schools and campuses and our students and their teachers and staff that work so hard, Father. And we just thank you that only you know what a blessing they are and all the tiny little ways that they may be so blessing and impacting a child, Lord. And we just thank you for that, Father, and we thank you for all of our blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss personnel recommendations, resignations, and contractual matters, S C E C G? So moved.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll meet up.
We return to open session. Is there any action from executive session?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the administration's recommendations for hiring.
Do we have a second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we move to another action item, the textbook adoption of Dr. Singletary.
Correct. Madam Chair, as Dr. Singletary approaches the podium for this presentation, in the last board meeting, we were asked to go back and gather additional information about resources and then the textbook process that we followed. We went and gathered that information and we'd like to share that with you and then we can answer any questions that you have at that time. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Singletary. She's been doing a lot of work with the teachers and so she's been running around collecting this information. Dr. Singletary, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Presley and school board members. You'll see here on the slide our district textbook selection update. And what I was doing as I gathered the information is I went back in and just really looked in closely at our points and so you will see, which that is included on the handout at your stations there, we went through and looked at the breakout and so you can see here all of the publishers that we reviewed and that is the summary of our sixth grade responses. So, and what I did there, after you'll see there from sixth grade, we moved in and you'll be able to look to see again how all of our teachers responded with our seventh grade teachers and the responses to those publishers as well. And then finally rounding that out, you will see our responses for our eighth graders. And so the next slide you'll see, I'll just speak briefly to, as I was gathering additional information as Mr. Presley referenced, one of the calls that I had was with our representative at the State Department, Ms. Nicole Barker, and she, as we were, you know, just looking in all the different options about resources and programs and things of that nature, you know, she asked me if I would like to see the information that the K through 12 panel put together for each of the publishers that we were in question about. And that information is pulled out here. There was a report, but I think the part you'll bring your attention to is up at the top is the McGraw-Hill and of course I'm bringing attention to the sixth grade information that we received from the State Department as it relates to alignment to the standards. And then you'll see Curriculum Associates down at the bottom as it relates to alignment to state standards. So you'll see there, it was a little bit of a flag raised for us there. And then finally, the slide that you have there listed are the resources. I know that that was a question that was asked. And of course, you'll see from Curriculum Associates, it talks there again about the work text and Student Companion, Fluency Skills Practice Book. And then when it says Student Bookshelf, that is referencing the digital resources that come along with it and the interactive learning games and interactive practice. And then here to my right, you'll see the resources that come along with the McGraw-Hill, which again, the print student edition, digital student resources. It is compatible with iReady. It does offer different textbooks for accelerated courses, which is important at our middle school level for math because we do offer accelerated math to our sixth and seventh grade students. One to two minute replay video explanations, Alex, and ready-made daily differentiation. And so that was the additional information.
What is Alex?
It is another computer program software that is utilized to help to strengthen students with their math skills. That does mean that it's a different platform from one of the ones that we are already using. So it would be a different computer platform.
I have a question. Dreambox, do you still utilize that as well or not?
Not at the middle level.
Okay. That's only elementary, correct. Dreambox. On this page, one page back, one screen back, what is the, what are the red, what's number four and number six?
That should be.
What does that mean?
Does not meet expectations.
So the four is like a point system?
Yes, that came from, that's the, well, let me say it this way. Well, I'll let Mr. Presley give an answer.
Let me look at that because it's six that exemplifies and it's four that does not meet. So that's a total of four that does not meet. Is six exemplified or is that a total of?
So for that-
Of the standards, the number of standards?
No, for that particular section which deals with alignment, the South Carolina Career Standards, the alignment is a does not meet, but the learning progressions and coherence wasn't exemplified. So for the purpose of standards being aligned for sixth grade to McGraw-Hill, it was a does not meet expectation.
Okay.
That's just that part of the report for the sixth grade. And so just for comparison purposes, we put the curriculum associates there for the alignment piece.
So as a teacher works in a classroom, how difficult would it be for a teacher to augment that curriculum with other activities and the teacher's skills so that that would be, he or she could turn that to a meets expectation?
Mr. Graff, I think that's going to take some work on our alignment once we have access to the textbook, the resources, and it's going to be our teachers really working through to align with those standards that the textbook is missing.
All right. So that's within a realm of reasonable expectation that our teachers can overcome that gap?
I would say it is within the realm of expectation because they have to do that with almost every textbook. When we look at pacing and standards, they're going to come back and rework our pacing to align with what these standards, the standards that we have to cover. And then you can see there are several textbooks that could be selected and I don't think the state would send us any that they didn't think we could do the job with.
A question. Has, was it ever teased out the literal number of teachers that preferred one over the other, irregardless of what school they were at? Just total, if there's 22 teachers across all three schools, was there one or the other that seemed to rise to the top?
If you'll take a look at your one pager, the one that, this one, Ms. Berger, and you'll look there, we, with the rubric, with teachers planning and working together, the method that has been used is they, if you're teaching sixth grade, then the three, sixth grade teachers work together to complete the rubric. And so in terms of it being teased out, they work together and collaborate there to do that. So it's a sixth grade team, you know, just depending on how many teachers teach that.
So it was consensus, not individual votes?
Not individual. Unless you were the only person that taught that subject, like in some of our cases, like of course at Whitmire, some of those teachers would have done it individually if they were the only one that taught that subject.
And so just looking at the material that was presented to us, it looks like, to me, McGraw-Hill was the consensus of the majority of teachers.
Mm-hmm. It was. I just, we, as we got that information, we thought it was important to see, oh, I'm sorry.
No, and you were pointing out, Dr. Singletary, Ms. Lake, that information, they just didn't have that before they reviewed all the textbooks. And that's the only thing we wanted, you know, to point out, that we didn't have the alignment information from the state as our teachers went through this process. And the teachers that we have spoken with, they have made comments that they wish they would have had that information.
Did no one think to ask about that information when they started this process? Normally the state gets sent, my understanding, we don't have to request it. Did anybody think, hey, where's that information and not reach out at that point?
Because usually the alignment comes first.
Normally, when you go through the textbook caravan process, the information is going to be provided to anyone, to all the teachers that are sent or any district personnel that are sent to take part in that. In many cases, the information that's provided, the state says this is the information that we have on the textbooks, aligned with the standards, and that information just was not provided in the process this time and we had to request it.
Is there some thought that with the amount of iReady that we already use, that McGraw-Hill could perhaps fill in gaps that iReady does not, so that they complement each other because there's no textbook anywhere that always fits every need? And so like the best of two worlds, has that been discussed? Do you see what I'm saying?
And with our lead structure, when they, when they come together, I mean, we have time during the summer where we reach out and we ask the leads and the teachers to participate in the alignment. And that's when we really look to see, okay, is this standard really being addressed and how can we better address it? Now that we have the document and it lays it out, that, that's on the screen right now is a summary. That document will lay it out by standard. So we'll know which one's not aligned.
All of our students do not perform at the same level. Does one of these meet the different needs of our students better than the other?
McGraw-Hill is better aligned when we looked at the state document with accelerated and the curriculum associates is better aligned with the CP level.
I noticed that all the numbers are very close, less than 1%, if you add all the rubrics together. In the sixth grade, it was 15. In the seventh grade, there was the widest margin, 54, and in the eighth grade, only three points difference. And the teachers I talked to said if they'd had that information, they would have voted for curriculum associates. And I noticed that Whitmire voted for curriculum associates on all three and they didn't have any information either. So I'm a strong supporter of that because I think you can tie that in with iReady and do what we need to do.
To counter, kind of act with that, I mean, as far as, you know, the teachers that I have talked with, you know, still even with the information that's given to them, they still prefer McGraw-Hill. So, I mean, to me, it's kind of split, you know, with our teachers all over the county, depending on where you teach.
Dr. Singletary, Mr. Presley mentioned that you might have information about if Whitmire could possibly help.
That can't happen.
Oh, you found out?
Yes. Can't happen.
Well, that's too bad.
And I think that's, I think that's kind of a shame because I think that is not allowing us as a school board to meet the needs of individual groups of students.
I've got a question. They meet in the summer, the district leads and I guess some other teachers, since it's going to be a new textbook one way or the other, don't they have to do a new, like pacing guide and all that that they do?
Well, that's happening naturally because of the new standards.
Right. And so I guess where I'm going, if McGraw-Hill, we stay with that book that was the one that, you know, wasn't by a great margin like Mr. Bledsoe's pointed out, but it was the one, if you go by majority rule, that was selected, that we voted for. When they go through their pacing guide and all of that, you're going to make sure, oh, I did, when I did one, you were making sure that you covered all your standards that the students were going to be tested on. So wouldn't you be placing in there anything that might possibly be missing from that McGraw-Hill textbook?
Yes.
Makes sense. Dr. Singletary, you know, you don't, if you know, hey, this book, for whatever reason, is really not strong or didn't even do this one little thing, you're going to make sure we put it in there, right?
And I will say this, we, you know, once we have a textbook, you know, when we get our teachers together for pacing and alignment, you know, they're going to do the work that they feel is best for Newberry in aligning us with state expectations.
Right.
So I don't think that's going to change anything that we normally do, bringing them together to work through that process.
That's what I thought. So no matter which choice, our teachers, they're going to make sure we are providing for our students what they need to be successful.
The other thing too, you said that McGraw-Hill helped our accelerated students more. I think that's a big weakness in this district for us not accelerating our brightest and best to their capacity. And so if that's a way we can do that, to move them even further, to get them better ready for high-
ready for high school with this middle school program, I think that would be a plus. Again, I go back to them using the iReady daily with their little tasks they have to do on computer. I think it would be some holes that could plug in. But, that's my take. And listening to the majority of teachers, y'all know I'm going to side with my teachers.
And Mr. Presley, you just said something a few minutes ago, the ones that we were selecting from were the ones that our State Department had already looked at, vetted, he, these are your choices. I would hope that they would not have had a choice on that list that was so far off-
Right.
-from what they know they're testing our children on.
And that's why we ask for the alignment documentation, just to see which textbook better align with the state standards. And that's the information that they provided.
So, for me to understand what you're asking of us this morning, we either stay with the decision that we made last Monday night, the recommendation was to adopt McGraw-Hill, which we did, or we make a change this morning, is that correct?
Correct. So, right now, what we have adopted is, and what has been approved, is McGraw-Hill. Based on the information we received with the alignment, the only change would be Curriculum and Associates would be our non-accelerated selection for middle school, and McGraw-Hill would be our accelerated selection.
So, you're choosing two, is that correct? You could.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
You could choose two. And the one thing that I was about to point out earlier, and it escaped my mind, or it slipped my mind, once we select these textbooks, they are textbook selection until the next textbook adoption. So, we are locked in. Dr. Secretary, is that correct? Is that a correct statement?
That is correct, that is a correct statement. Yes, sir.
And when was the last math textbook adoption?
Before I came to, before I came to this role, so over 10 years ago.
Yeah, wait a minute. Two plus two is still four. I told y'all that a while ago, someone. But, it can be a while.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Us to get the best, and I think it is going to help our accelerated students the best. Think we need to listen to what teachers are saying.
I strongly support teachers. I wonder if the administration, are you getting any feedback from the principals or the teachers since you came up with the phrase? That, they say, well, we'll change our mind, or we're content with it. I'm good either way, I was going to do what's best for them.
I've spoken with one or two principals, but Dr. Secretary has spoken with every single one that's impacted. And, Dr. Secretary, do you mind sharing some of the things?
Well, you know, when, when we go through this process, you know, the schools, you know, we ask them to submit their school choice. And so, of course, you know, when speaking with Ms. Dribble, she is a strong advocate for Curriculum Associates, and felt like it would be seamless for her with her students from K through eight, and really felt like there were a lot of beneficial tools that would be supportive for them. But, of course, when it was not selected, she being the team player that she is, she knew that she would, you know, have to make it, make it work. Mr. Reed, you know, he was another one from Newbury Middle School with some follow-up questions, because he had initially looked into being able to purchase some Curriculum and Associates materials in his, in his, on his campus, and then when this book came on there. So, I know that he has had some conversation as well. Dr. Dobbins, we spoke briefly, and, you know, of course, his campus was a little bit more of a McGraw-Hill campus and trying to support that. Just, it's kind of the overview there.
I'm glad we get to choose between better and best, or good. I mean, I'm good either way. So, we pay you big bucks, or you got a recommendation? Do it like you said.
There you go. If we make any changes, it would just be adding Curriculum and Associates as the non-accelerated text for middle school. But, these are all the, this is all the information we've gathered that we can provide for you. Are there any other questions with anything that we provided?
I guess the only comment that I would add to it is that, speaking with several teachers, that if possible, they would rather not go between two books.
I had heard the same concern, because sometimes teachers may teach an accelerated class, and then they're also teaching a CP class, and so, there was, there was some concern about.
I would imagine that doubles the workload in terms of class prep.
Yeah. But, that was a concern that had been communicated to me as well, so I don't know. I guess we keep that thought in our minds.
I got that from, I got that from one teacher.
Yeah.
We certainly want what's best for students, but then if a teacher is that overwhelmed or stressed, then that ultimately doesn't turn out good for the students either. So, it's kind of a, does that make sense?
Well, is it time to make a motion to stand with our previous, or do we need to vote, we vote?
To make a motion.
We're going to have to make a motion. Mr. Presley's recommendation, if I understood him, was that we-
If you think-
Keep McGraw-Hill for accelerated, and then adopt the Curriculum Associates for CP.
And I'm, I'm providing the information that I have from our teachers, so that you see that, and I'm, I have to provide that information that we got from the state. And so, my recommendation is coming from the alignment document that we got in addition to the information that we have from our teachers.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration.
Do we have a second? All right, any discussion? Motion and second on the floor for accepting the administration's recommendation that we now adopt Curriculum Associates for our CP students and keep the McGraw-Hill for the accelerated students.
Discussion, when they were looking at these two options, were they in their minds thinking one for one group, one for one for CP, one for accelerated, because none of this documentation that we have gives any suggestion to that? And still, the McGraw-Hill seems to be the overwhelming selection. If it was only, if they were not delineating between CP and accelerated.
It is my understanding, going through the process, we knew that we could, we could select a CP and an accelerated option for six through eight.
It seems that should have been revealed somewhere on here. Because in both sixth and seventh grade, there's a strong leaning toward the McGraw-Hill, but.
So, would only one teacher at each school be teaching that accelerated? Not necessarily.
Yeah, I couldn't, I mean, right now, it would probably be one teacher in most, on most campuses, but I couldn't say it will always be just one teacher. It could-
I'm just thinking of how many classes and students that that would affect.
Because what we, from what Dr. Secretary said in our past experience, whatever decision we make, it could be many years till we have, you know, whether textbook opportunities.
That's correct.
So, yeah, even though it may say, hey, it's just one teacher now, was it going to look like five years from now, or four years from now? I know what I can look at.
So, so given that piece of information, that it may be eight or 10 years before we can adopt a new textbook, if today we adopt both, as has been recommended, can we in five years dump one and move to the other?
That was going to be my question. We've got them in the building. We've done that before, back and forth. Pulled old books from back.
And if we don't have a solid answer for that, that's fine, because I know that was kind of an off-the-wall question, but-
We've done it before.
It would give us, having both textbooks in the building, would give us that latitude.
Well, it's, textbooks have changed a lot over the years.
License, sure.
Like, before, we used to be able to keep 30, 40, 50 extra textbooks, and you would trade them between schools. Then the textbook depository started cracking down, and they would only let you keep maybe a few textbooks extra. So, you had to get the extra textbooks from them, and if you weren't using them, they would contact the school or the district and say, you have these additional textbooks on your inventory, you don't have enough students for them, we need those textbooks back, because someone else needs them. Because those textbooks officially, they belong to the state. And so, it would-
It wouldn't be our resource to-
Right, right. It's not like I can order it for sixth grade and use it for seventh grade. It was six through seven.
How long have we been using the iReady now for, to test out our students in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade?
So, that we're clear, this is Curriculum and Associates textbook, which is not the same as the-
I get that, but I mean, right now, we're using that as our district assessment, right?
That's our formative assessment that the state requires.
But, we're not using the Curriculum Associate book right now. We've got another book. But, you know, for, that's why I was asking, how long have we used iReady for our district assessment?
We started in 2020.
2020, okay. I don't know, I guess to me, that, and again, that, it's just, it's kind of hard to be able to go against what math teachers, and especially because I am not an education person. And so, you know, when I get information, you know, I'm dependent upon, you know, what the people in the classroom are telling me. And so, we are using a different textbook now and making it work with iReady. It didn't, you know, and again, I'm not an educator, so I'm just trying to kind of think this through, so.
Is there any more discussion? Everybody's thinking hard up here.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and second on the floor.
Repeat the motion, please.
Sir?
Would, would you repeat the motion?
I'll fix it. We have a motion and second on the floor to adopt McGraw-Hill for our accelerated students and to adopt Curriculum Associates for our CP students, and we're talking about grades six, seven, and eight. Is that correct, Mr. Presley?
Correct. So, a vote in favor would change what you currently approved at the last meeting? A vote in the negative would keep things the same? So, McGraw-Hill would be the textbook for six through eight, CP as well as accelerated?
Okay, yeah. Got that, Mr. Graff? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, which would change the decision from last Monday to now adopting two textbooks, one for McGraw-Hill for accelerated, Curriculum Associates for CP, please say aye.
Aye. Is that do it by hand?
You want to do it by hand?
Please.
Okay. And Ms. Shannon, you were a- Aye, okay. So, the ayes have it, it's a vote, well, the nays, we're at our hands now. So, it's, ayes have it, vote a four to three.
Is that it for me?
That's it, thank you, Dr. Secretary. All right, and if there is no further, this is, this meeting is adjourned.